We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So, good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of May 27, 2025. For the record, I will call a roll call vote of the board members. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
And myself, and Ms. Jackson Long, our student trustee, is on a very exciting study abroad component who is not here with us this evening. So, the first item on our agenda for the public hearing is a notice of levy increases. And it's item C2, a truth and taxation hearing, which is required under state law. The Maricopa County Community College District are considering a proposal to increase property taxes in the fiscal year 2020, primary property taxes, and that's important. I'll come back to that, and fiscal year 25, 25, 26 on existing property. I want you to note that, that due to reductions in debt service payments for voter approved bonded indebtedness, even with the proposed increase in primary property taxes, the overall property taxes, primary and secondary combined, declined from the current rate of $1.10 to $1.08. This, for clarity, taxation is always interesting, so gives you the explanation. Again, the proposed increase on the primary level is 2.91%, which equals $17,815,244 in additional property tax revenues from existing property. At this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board considering the proposed action under consideration to increase the primary property taxes on existing property. I do not have any cards at the moment to speak on that item, but I will issue the call again if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on the proposal. Any comments from members of the board? Seeing none, that concludes the truth and taxation hearing for this evening. The next item on the agenda is item number C3, which is the public hearing concerning the adoption of the proposed budget for the Maricopa County Community College District for fiscal year 25, 26. This hearing is also required under state law. The purpose of the hearing is to give any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to protest the inclusion of any item in the proposed budget. At this time, again, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board considering the proposed action under consideration. Again, I do not have any speaker cards for that effort, but I will issue the call one more time. Anyone wishing to speak to the proposed action under consideration? Seeing none, let me ask for the board, any comments from members of the board? Ms. Davis.
I thought the budget document that they provided to us was amazing and very well done. And I would like to give kudos to the staff that put that budget together. It was great. And every time I see one of these budgets, I learn more and more and more. And so by the time I get off here, I might actually understand everything I'm supposed to understand, but it was wonderful. So, thank you for all that hard work.
Ms. Davis, I would just echo that, and I appreciate you suggesting that. Any other four comments?
Just ditto.
Seeing lots of heads nod from board members. So, with that, that concludes the public hearing regarding Maricopa Community College budgets tonight. This concludes the public hearings. Let the record reflect that it is now 6:40, and that session is adjourned. Moving on, I would like to now convene the special board meeting of May 27, 2025. And of course, it's redundant, but for the record, I do need to call roll of the board members again. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Present.
And myself, and again, Ms. Jackson Long is not with us this evening. First item on the agenda is item D2, which is the motion to levy the increased property taxes, as we previously described, the primary property tax rate. Is there a motion to that effect? Some moved. Moved by Ms. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Thor. Are there any, is any discussion by board members or questions? Ms. Davis, I did not mean to cut you off, but. Okay, in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by a roll call vote. Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Norene.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Dr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Sullivan.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. By unanimous vote, the motion passes. All right, moving on again now to item D3, which is the approval and adoption of the proposed FY 2025, 2026 Maricopa Community College District budget. In improving the budget, the board also authorizes the expenditure of budgeted revenues and realized and designated fund balances within the total amount budgeted in each fund, which include the general fund, the auxiliary fund, the plant fund, quasi-endowment fund, restricted fund, and debt serviced. And I should stop here and mention to you that we're going through this rather rapidly, but the board has spent a great deal of time in areas of understanding. And per the comment you just heard, we've had a lot of briefings and comments about what is contained in this budget. So, we're not seeing it for the first time this evening. The board has been presented with a budget that should be acted on whether and whether or not we improve the 2.91 increase in the existing tax levy, which is the primary tax levy, but not the secondary levy. If the board does not approve that percent tax levy increase, the total budget and some planned expenditures or reserves will be decreased to reflect the loss of the levy increase as a resource. Board members, is there any further discussion? If not, is there a motion on the adoption of the budget? Some moved. Moved by Ms. Sullivan, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Norene. One more time, any additional discussion by board members? If not, again, in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by a roll call vote. Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Norene.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Dr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Sullivan.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. By unanimous vote, the budget is adopted. We'll take a breath, because that's a result of many months of work, so. And board members, there's one other little thing you need to do before you leave this evening. Be sure and step and see Elsa, because you need to sign the certificate of adoption document. You cannot get in your car and go home unless you do that, so. So, that concludes the special meeting tonight. Let the record reflect that it is now 6:40. Moving on. Or did I say six? Well, so my watch and the clock are different, so we'll say 6:45 to be careful. Thank you. My watch is just moving fast. Again, we are now into our regular board meeting. We are still live captioning our meetings, and please again look in the chat window or WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So, at this time, I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 27, 2025. And amazingly, we have to call the roll one more time. So, again, Ms. Butler, are you still here?
Still.
Ms. Davis.
I'm also present still.
Dr. Norene.
Still present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Still present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Still here.
And I am here. None of us have left, so again, again, Ms. Jackson Long is on her study abroad. So, we would now like to move to the pledge of allegiance, and I would ask the students from Rio Salado College and the Student Senate to please come to the podium and help us lead in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic that stands one nation, God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Those students are coming back in just a minute. I just need to announce that there are no substitutions for this evening. And now, we get to welcome them, the Rio Salado Student Life and Leadership Group, to do a presentation. I understand that in addition to students, their director Kate Pecker are here with us tonight, and students, and there's Kate. Students, if you would introduce yourselves, and then we'll move forward in the presentation.
President Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Council, and guests, good evening. My name is Maria Elena Aguirre Foster. This past year, I proudly served as Vice President of Communication and Public Relations for Alpha Theta Omicron, a Democracy Fellow for Campus Vote Project, and the Student Senator at Rio Salado College. I will graduate in fall 2027 with a degree in Addictions and Substance Use Disorders. My commitment to succeeding in these roles and in everything I set my mind to is rooted in my proudest accomplishment, over eight years in recovery from intravenous drug use. Education gave me a second chance at life, and through the support and leadership opportunities I've received, I now dedicate myself to giving back and helping others find their path forward. Now, I'm honored to share the incredible work Rio Salado students have accomplished this past year. Next slide, please. We've had an impactful year, and I'm excited to highlight the civic engagement efforts we've been a part of. Next slide, please. Onside. Would you allow me to continue? I have no, okay. So, at Rio Salado.
Sorry.
No problem, okay. At Rio Salado.
There we go.
Civic engagement is a priority, and with support from dedicated staff, our student organizations came together to create meaningful impact. We organized voter registration drives, hosted what's on your ballot events, participated in Arizona town halls, provided a ballot drop box at our Tempe location, and held ID clinics to help students and community members obtain the identification they needed to vote. One of the most meaningful experiences for me personally was participating in the Student Public Policy Forum, or SPIF, where I learned the importance of engaging in the civic process. I'll now turn it over to my fellow Spitzer to share more. Thank you.
My name is Anira Bermudez. I am pursuing a degree in public administration and will be graduating in May 2026. This year, I have grown as a student leader through many experiences. One of the proudest moments was when Maria Elena Aguirre Foster, Alseer Ahmed, Kelly Sukka, and I were honored with the Chancellor's Civic Leadership Medallion for our efforts, as shown in this photo. Next slide, please. The SPIF highlight was co-hosting a virtual workshop titled Checks, Balances, and Brain Power with the Arizona Secretary of State Adrian Fontes as the guest speaker. As students, it allowed us to demonstrate the knowledge we gathered on the very basics of government and how to use that information to advocate for our communities. This journey culminated in a trip to Washington DC, where we advocated for housing support for community college students, an experience that opened the door to serving on a student panel at Rio Salado, and ultimately to being with you here today. Thank you.
My name is Angelo Lopez. I'm a Democracy Fellow and a PTK Vice President in membership. I just graduated with a degree in Applied Sciences and Addiction and Substance Use Disorders. This fall, I am transferring to NAU using the All Arizona Academic Team Scholarship. Last fall, the Democracy Fellowship became possible through a partnership with the nonpartisan organization Civic Nations, where fellows received hands-on training, become certified Maricopa County Deputy Registers, and developed and led multiple events. Next slide, please. We focused on helping people register to vote, check their ballot status, and find resources to make informed decisions. Along the way, our knowledge and confidence grew, and so did our ability to support our classmates, families, and broader community. This semester, we are working on a video series to help educate people about the process of restoring their civil liberties. The reason why I'm so passionate about these issues is because my introduction to Rio Salado was as an incarcerated scholar. With that said, I'm one of the millions of Americans whose rights have been taken from them due to a felony conviction. Rio Salado has been a safe haven, source of support, and my biggest cheerleader as I have taken on the reentry process. Next slide, please. Our hard work led to recognition. Rio Salado was honored as a voter-friendly campus and named one of the most engaged campuses for college student voting. We also received the Silver Seal for student voter turnout. Our PTK president, Saffron Wells, was named to the All-In-Campus Democracy Challenge Honor Roll and even featured in Forbes. Thank you.
My name is Lucero Arciniega. I am the incoming Student Senator, a Democracy Fellow, and the East Valley Rotorac Club Secretary and Treasurer. I'm going for a degree in anthropology. Next slide, please. An opportunity that really stood out to me was the intercollegiate student leadership retreat. Seven students had the chance to represent Rio Salado this year. I came back from the retreat feeling like a stronger leader and a more connected to my college and to students from across the district. As an adult student, it is easy to feel a bit disconnected from the traditional college experience, but this retreat gave me that real student experience, learning new leadership skills, discovering more about myself, building a network, and making friendships. Next slide, please. Another opportunity is the National Society of Leadership and Success, NSLS. And nearly 100 real students got access to leadership training, networking, and personal development this year. Last week, 27 real students were inducted at the Spring 2025 NSLS Induction Ceremony. In November, the chapter organized a donation drive for National Homelessness Awareness Month, collecting items for the seventh dream, Helping Hands, a nonprofit that supports foster, pregnant, and parenting teens. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Sukka, and I'm a first-generation student and PTK Vice President of Service. I am pursuing a degree in psychology, and I'm honored to share my Phi Theta Kappa experience. This year has been one of the most active and meaningful for our chapter. We have doubled in size, attended regional conferences in Phoenix and Tucson, and proudly represented Rio Salado and Maricopa at the International PTK Catalyst Conference in Kansas City. Along the way, we grew, not just as leaders and scholars, but as friends. We supported one another through academics, personal challenges, and life in general. Next slide, please. We completed two major research and community projects this year, Honors in Action and the College Project. As a result, our chapter was recognized as a five-star chapter and received several regional and national awards, as seen on screen. We partnered with the Democracy Fellows to support voter education efforts, visiting classrooms and Rio campuses to help students get involved. One project we're especially proud of is PTK Pulse Podcast, which is available on YouTube. In one of the episodes, I share my journey of growing up in the streets of Columbia and how education transformed my life. Another episode is now used by Rio's Faculty in Chinese 101 and 102 Lessons on Food and Culture. Next slide, please. Over the past year, we've been involved in a wide range of events, planning, attending, and learning, leading many of them. We inducted 360 students in PTK since last year and took part in services events as Feed My Starving Children, Phoenix Rescue Mission, Valley of the Sun United, and much more. Next slide, please. We've also become more active at the regional level. This year, our chapter president, Saffron Wells, served as the AZ Regional VP of Central District. And I'm excited to share that next year, I'll be serving as your regional president. It's an honor to represent Rio and continue building connections across Arizona and beyond. Thank you.
My name is Fatima Gattia, and I'm the Social Media Manager in the East Valley Rotorac Club. I am a high school equivalency student at the Rio Northern and plan to go for a degree in Criminology and Psychology. Next slide, please. This year has been full of energy and involvement. We've had virtual, hybrid, and in-person events that covered everything from careers with the FBI to financial literacy, artificial intelligence, cybersecurity, and more. Next slide, please. In February, we officially launched the East Valley Rotorac Club at Rio Salado, and we're on track to charter it this July. Since launching, we've hit the ground running with a mix of service projects, social events, and community outreach. We volunteered at local food banks, worked with Keep Tempe Beautiful, hosted donation drives, and attended events at museums, libraries, and the MCC Planterium.
My name is Goldene Johnson Pompey, and I'm the East Valley Rotorac Club President, the Regional PTK VP of the Central District, and the Rio Salado PTK Vice President of Leadership, and I'm going for a degree in Law and Policy. There's a growing demand for safe, meaningful, and enjoyable ways to give back, and Rotorac truly delivers. It also provides mentorship, a growing professional network, and space to build lasting friendships and connections. Being part of Rotorac helped me grow as a leader and taught me that serving others can be both rewarding and inspiring. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Before you all sit down, let me just see if the board has any questions for any of our standing students. I want to point out, semester's over, and they are here, and I want to commend you. Thank you for being here to showcase what you do, so. Dr. Norene, who does have the right shirt on, by the way.
I have the right shirt on. And the right socks.
A pleasure. The socks are first. We've not seen those before, but.
I was just, I just wanted to have somebody explain a little bit more about the membership to PTK, and what are some of the obstacles for other students becoming members of PTK?
Thank you. That was a great question. So, you're wondering what membership has to offer through Phi Theta Kappa?
And what are students required to become members?
So, for students that are looking to become a member of Phi Theta Kappa, you do have a GPA of at least 3.5 and 12 credit hours, I believe. Some obstacles, there is a membership fee. It's one time. However, that one cost, as we know, with textbooks, living situations, food, that small payment that they only have to pay once, that's creating a challenge if they're not able to join, losing out on a lifetime of opportunity.
And some of those opportunities, do they include scholarships and that sort of thing?
Yes, absolutely. So, Phi Theta Kappa has thousands of exclusive scholarships that help you to transfer to universities. As of right now, in just Arizona alone, they partner with all the major state universities.
So, we have lots of students who are eligible to join, but maybe don't have the resources to be a part of it, to take advantage of all the opportunities.
Absolutely. It's definitely a high need.
Dr. Can you tell us what the fee is?
95.
And so, I want to point out that the foundation has set up a matching grant for each of the colleges' PTK. So, they're willing to match $1,000 to each college for membership, to pay for memberships. So, each college is going to raise $1,000 to get $2,000. Thank you to Brian for that.
Thank you so much, truly. That partnership is going to open up the opportunity for so many students. I know I speak for so many, but me specifically, not just recovery, but two years ago, I was an entirely different person. Phi Theta Kappa completely, it did my life into an entirely new sector I didn't think even existed, and I'm so proud to say that. And I really just want all of us to give that extended hand to those that need it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
To that, to that point, some of the state schools that have partnerships with us, I think ASU will give $4,000 scholarship per year for a PTK student who is transferring. ASU, I think, gives the same amount. U of A, I think, is a couple thousand, and so does GCU. So, this $99 or $95 membership fee is an investment to these students to earn, you know, $8,000 to $10,000 in additional scholarships.
But I may add, members of the reentry community, makes them big. And a lot of them, a lot of us, weren't even educated to what PTK is, does for you. And I think it's huge that you're going to be able to offer some of these men and women that opportunity that I am so grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Norene, for the questions. Ms. Sullivan?
I just need to throw in, so much achievement is reflected in all of you. And we see that through a lot of our students, but your presentation tonight with the obstacles that you've accepted and overcome is very impressive. So, congratulations to you, especially as we're looking at the end of the school year, and may we wish you the best in your future endeavors. So, thank you.
Thank you. We also have members of the Student Senate and their advisor with us tonight. So, Dr. Brock, would you like to introduce your students and yourself? I think most of us know you, but we'll start with that, too.
Yes. President Bittersmith, members of the governing board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of SGEC, and guests. My name is Keisha Brock, Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Services. And it's my pleasure to take a moment to recognize the voices that are at the very heart of our colleges, our students. Maricopa Student Senate is a vital student leadership body composed of one student senator from each of our 10 colleges. Together, they advocate for the shared interests, needs, and aspirations of all of our students. Senators act as a bridge between students and college leadership, bringing forward concerns, ideas, and accomplishments, not only to their campuses, but to the district and to the wider community. Serving as a student senator is both a challenge and an honor. These students take on the responsibility of representing thousands of their peers, participating in policy discussions, and promoting initiatives that support student well-being and success. Through their leadership, senators are developing the essential skills of advocacy, collaboration, and civic engagement, skills that will serve them well beyond their time here at Maricopa. With that said, I'm proud to introduce Victoria Baker, Chair of the Student Senate. Victoria exemplifies leadership and dedication that defines our student body. As chair, she has worked closely with her fellow senators to elevate student voices across the district. Please join me in welcoming Victoria Baker, who will share more about the Senate's work and impact this year.
Good evening, President Susan Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Stephen Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Council, and guests. My name is Tori Baker, and I am the Chair of the Maricopa Student Senate for the 2025 academic year. I'm here with my fellow senators, and I am privileged to share with you the accomplishments of this year's Senate body. I'd like to start by introducing the senators behind me. Jeremy Walk, our Deputy Chair from Paradise Valley Community College. Maria Elena Foster, our Secretary from Rio Salado College. Malin Gilbert-Gallas from Glendale Community College. Victor Ayala from South Mountain Community College. Pamela Smith with Phoenix College, a newly selected board member. Those who could not be here tonight are Victor Gemba from Gateway Community College. Abby Dupree from Estrella Community College. Rudy Sanchez from Mesa Community College. And Davy Sullivan from Scottsdale Community College. We also have our advisor, Kyoki Maloy. Next slide. We've gone through momentous moments from this school year, attended numerous events, felt the highs of our accomplishments, worked through committed issues and concerns, and have been honored with awards. Next slide, please. Have the opportunity to attend many events for our Student Senate. Here are just a few memorable ones. First, the intercollegiate student leadership experience armed us with both knowledge and understanding, while also working with and alongside other leaders. Within their colleges, the intercollegiate student leadership experience, also known as ISOL, aims to strengthen leadership skills, foster networking across campuses, and promote civic engagement. Participants engaged in collaborative projects and interactive sessions to build a deeper understanding of civic leadership. Second, Jeremy Walk facilitated a student forum at Paradise Valley Community College on executive orders leading discussion about their legal and constitutional implications. The event explored historical and current executive orders, highlighting their impact on governance, encouraging diverse viewpoints and critical analysis, fostering a deeper understanding of presidential powers and their controversies. Next, we participated in the Arizona Town Hall on Foreign Policies, Foreign Relations, Aging with Community Leaders, Policy Experts, and Students. The event examined global issues and Arizona's role in international affairs, sparking dynamic discussions about diplomacy, global partnerships. Through this experience, I gained insights into the complexities of foreign relations and collaborative policymaking. Furthermore, a couple of us participated in the Student Leadership Summit at the University of Arizona, joining student leaders from across the state. The event focused on developing leadership skills, promoting civic engagement, and building networks of influential advocates, gaining valuable insights into effective leadership practices and strategies for driving change. Next, the Up to Us Leadership Bootcamp finalist team in Washington DC brings together top student leaders from across the nation to tackle fiscal policy challenges and develop sustainable solutions for the country's economic future. Throughout this immersive experience, the team engages workshops, networking, and real-world policy simulations to hone their leadership. As a finalist team, they present their innovative ideas directly to policymakers and industry leaders in the nation's capital, showcasing their dedication to creating a fiscally secure future for all. Additionally, the Maricopa Legislative Reception is an annual event that connects local elected officials with community leaders and residents in a collaborative environment. Had the opportunity. Had the opportunity to attend the reception and provide thought-provoking, open discussion of policy priorities and community initiatives. We've worked together to strengthen relationships and promote positive change with local officials and the governing board. Moreover, the bi-annual Professional Etiquette Dinner is a unique event designed to help students master the art of professional dining and business conversation, learn essential etiquette skills, including proper table manners, conversation techniques, and networking strategies. Finally, the Annual Student Success Conference was a vibrant gathering dedicated to equipping students with the tools and strategies needed for academic and professional excellence. Through interactive workshops, motivational speakers, networking opportunities, we gain valuable insights into personal and academic growth. Next slide. Now, looking on to accomplishments. First, the Student Senate was able to put together a collaborative effort and ask students on how they interpret the Maricopa County Community College District Services. What kind of data comes of this survey will move forward to the next Student Senate? We hope this helps the next Student Senate with initiatives to start fresh for fall 2025. As a chair, I'd like to leave a legacy for the Student Senate to become champions of change for the better and seek out student voices that are underrepresented. Second, I had the wonderful chance to be on the student panel for the Academic Advising Conference, able to bridge the gap between advisors and students while gaining insight to the first-gen Native American millennial navigating college. Finally, some of us had the opportunity to attend the Student Success Summit at an inspiring event where we, as student senators, sat on a panel to share our experiences, insights, and strategies for academic success. We engaged with fellow students and went to discuss the challenges we faced, supportive resources available to help us thrive. This panel is an exciting opportunity to connect, collaborate, empower each of us and other on our journeys towards success. Next slide, please. Finally, we reached voter registration. Members of our Senate hosted several tabling events for voter registration and information up to the election, and Glendale Community College served as a polling place for many students, as well as the community. We also had the opportunity to volunteer at St. Mary's Food Bank and adopt a street cleanup program for the city of Phoenix. Now, I will hand over the reins to Maylin to talk more about the accomplishments and awards of the Senate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tori. Hi, my name is Maylin Gilbert-Gallas. I am the Glendale Community College representative for the Student Senate for the 2024-2025 academic year. And I have the absolute honor and privilege to dive more into our accomplishments as a Senate. Next slide, please. This year, we had the opportunity to select the next governing board member, and we had many to choose from, but after we hosted interviews and spoke amongst ourselves, we came to the conclusion, and our next student governing board member will be a student senator from Phoenix College, Pamela Smith. Next slide, please. Not only that, we were able to work with district marketing and usability of the Maricopa Student Portal. We were able to give a student perspective on the usability and landscape of the user experience design, and these comments are now being used to optimize the portal for future students to come. Next slide, please. Next, we have graduation. We had four graduates within our Student Senate walk this year. Jeremy Walk, who graduated with his Associate of Arts in Social Work. Victor Ayala, who graduated with his Bachelor of Science in Behavioral Science with honors. Tori Baker, graduating with her Bachelor of Science in Technical Communications. And Davy Sullivan, who graduated with their Associate of Arts of Psychology. Next slide, please. Some of us had the privilege to sit on the MCCCD Strategic Enrollment Management that optimizes recruitment, retention, and graduation strategies across the district to stabilize and grow enrollment. Their work involved the collaboration with colleges and district offices to ensure the seamless implementation and evaluation of said initiatives. Next slide, please. More awards, yay! A few of our senators were able to receive the prestigious Chancellor Civic Leadership Medallion. Those were Jeremy Walk, Pamela Smith, Victor Ayala, and Marielena Foster. I, as well, also received an award from Glendale Community College Student Life and Leadership Office in regards to service and leadership within the Student Senate. Next slide, please. Lastly, we would like to commemorate the end of a fruitful and productive year, and we would like to recognize the future of the wonderful individuals who served their community in the Senate. Tori is going to New York University for a Master of Science in Integrated Marketing with a full scholarship. Jeremy will continue his education by going to ASU for his Bachelor's in Social Work. Marielena is going to continue their education with their Associate in Addiction and Substance Use Disorder, then off to ASU Honors College for a Bachelor of Science in Public Policy. Pamela is going to continue to serve her community and has been elected for the honorable position of being the 2025-2026 Student Governing Board Member. Victor Ayala will be going to ASU for his Master's in Social Work to work for the state of Arizona with all of his wonderful experience. I will be graduating in spring of 2026, and I'm going to continue my service at Glendale Community College as a student voice in the Governance Council Committee. And lastly, Davy Sullivan is going to continue their education at NAU for a Bachelor's in Psychology and as an advocate for student voices with plans to become a therapist for LGBTQ teens and young adults. We as a Student Senate would like to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you student senators. Exciting news about where you're headed next. Welcome to new student board members. We have a lot of Smiths on this board. So just, we'll hang together, those of us that are Smiths. But welcome. We look forward to seeing you in the fall when we start. And I will ask members of the board if they have any questions for this distinguished group of elected senators. You're the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you. Again, congratulations. Let's move on now to the faculty council board. Another Smith, Dr. Stacy Smith. I realize that. Yeah. Dr. Smith?
So President Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Council, and guests. My name is Stacy Smith. Yes, another Smith. I am a residential faculty member at Paradise Valley Community College and the 2025-2026 President of the Faculty Executive Council. I also was not prepared to follow the students, because that was a lot.
It is a tough task to follow.
Relevant to what I'm going to say. So, all right. It is an honor to stand before you, not only as a former Maricopa student, but as someone whose life has come full circle. In the circle of life, everything comes back to where it started. And for me, actually, it started here as a dual-enrollment student and then a degree-seeking student at Rio Salado. In 2001, I proudly marched in commencement, wearing my blue cap and gown as a mother with a two-year-old daughter in the crowd. Not only did I graduate as a member of Phi Theta Kappa with a degree in public administration, I was a student speaker at Rio's faculty luncheon, where I shared how the faculty and staff at Rio helped me reach my goal of earning an associate's degree. That day, my daughter saw her mother not only graduate, but sit on stage beside college and district leaders, including Rio's then-president, Dr. Thor. Today, I am one of those leaders, and my daughter is a graduate of Paradise Valley Community College's EMT program and now serves our community as an EMT. Vernon Jordan once said, "You are where you are today because you stand on somebody's shoulders, and wherever you're heading, you cannot get there by yourself. If you stand on the shoulders of others, you have a reciprocal responsibility to live your life so that others may stand on your shoulders." That quote speaks volumes. As an educator, I know no one achieves success alone. We rise because someone believed in us, supported us, and gave us the opportunity to grow, and we honor them by lifting others in return. That is why so many of us choose to teach. A teacher made a difference in our lives, and we now pay it forward to make an impact that is lasting for those who follow. Megan McGuire, faculty leader, librarian, and residential faculty member at Mesa Community College, shares her full-circle journey. She says, "Neither one of my parents received a college degree, and I was never encouraged by my family to attend college, so I did not know much about it. I did not know what credits or programs were, let alone how to navigate admissions and enrollment and financial aid and so forth." "Nevertheless, I decided to go to community college. I enrolled at MCC and began working in the library as a student worker. I learned college lingo and how college worked from a kind faculty member, which was pivotal in helping me figure out how to navigate college and decide on my goals. I received an AA in English from MCC. After that, I worked late nights in the library as staff and went to school at ASU during the day to get my bachelor's degree. From working at the college, I saw the difference we made in the lives of our students, and I realized the difference it was making in mine. I wanted to do more, so I went to get my master's degree and got a residential faculty position." Megan continues, "Because of my journey, I believe faculty and education leaders have an obligation to support students who do not come with the social capital that helps them succeed. We must meet them where they are and leverage their unique and valuable experiences and ideas. I also believe strongly in our contribution to building a stronger democracy and in students being able to take what they learn to improve the lives of their families, contribute to their communities, and be engaged citizens." Another example of life coming full circle. "In these times of uncertainty in higher education, it is more important than ever that we, as a district, work together to achieve our mission of igniting talent, transforming lives, and enriching communities. We must be intentional about keeping the circle of hope and opportunity alive for our students. This is why I chose to be a faculty leader in these challenging times, to foster shared governance that honors every voice, to preserve academic freedom that allows us to teach, research, and explore, to defend faculty rights, upholding the dignity of our work, to represent faculty through collaboration and with integrity, and to continue the circle of supporting, uplifting, and celebrating students. So today, as I look around this room filled with dedicated community servants, I'm reminded of one of the most enduring lessons from one of my favorite movies, The Lion King. It's the will of fortune, it's the leap of faith, it's the band of hope till we find our place on the path unwinding in the circle of life. I look forward to walking this path with all of you this year, continuing to build, to serve, and to lift others just as others lifted us. Thank you."
Thank you, Stacy. Now we are on to the Adjunct Faculty Association report. Kim? Welcome.
President Bittersmith, esteemed governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Executive Council, and guests tonight. Tough acts to follow tonight. I'm sorry, we have some amazing people that shared wonderful stories, and it was really inspiring to listen to the students. I have a really simple report comparatively. But I will start with our adjunct faculty group board have had a busy and productive semester, and we are all looking forward to a little bit of time off this summer. But we've had some really wonderful conversations this year. We have found now that our adjunct faculty members around the district are trusting us more and coming to us more in conversation and bringing us ideas and sharing with us their concerns, their ideas, their complaints, all variety of things. But we're looking at that not as, oh, gosh, someone's complaining, but more as, if this is something that somebody feels, there may be others. There's probably a lot of others that aren't speaking up, and so how can we turn this into action? One of our adjunct faculty members brought some concerns to myself and the two VPs at a small meeting. And one of her main concerns was about meeting spaces for adjunct faculty. The Arts Act and Adjunct Faculty Handbook both state that a designated co-working space will be provided for adjunct faculty, but we're finding that many adjuncts don't know where those spaces are. And I was asking, I have a spot that I go to at Phoenix College when I need to have a private meeting, and I was speaking to the administrator in the arts building, and he goes, "Oh, yeah, we have one in the music department, too." And I went, "We do?" And I realized, a lot of us don't know where our spaces are. So that's going to be one of our new projects, is researching to find out where are our spaces on campus. We're realizing that not only do we need a space as board members if we're having a district meeting or some sort of meeting that relates to our jobs as reps, but also adjuncts need spaces to speak with students privately. There are inconsistencies as to how and where adjuncts can meet with students. Reps are unable to meet in private regarding district issues. And we had one of our reps brought up the idea of, would this be a FERBA concern? To make sure that we have privacy for our students. I know one rep that I have who actually said she had a student just in tears and needed to speak to her, and she pulled the girl's bathroom and locked the door and said, "We have a private space. We can talk." And she said, "That's not how I wanted to conduct a meeting." And so we are planning on doing a bit of an inventory on where our spaces are and being able to publish that, not only for our board members, but for other adjuncts, so that if they have a student they need to meet with on a campus or other people that they need to have a conversation with in private, we can provide that information. Along with that, the same adjunct who brought us this question also said, "You know, I know the drill. I've been teaching for a while, but a lot of people don't seem to know where to find information about orientation, if they're a new adjunct or an ongoing adjunct." And so that has been our next mission, is that we are going to create a, even though we have district-provided references on different orientation programs and Canvas courses, we're going to try to create a unified group of information that all of our reps will have a script for, have resources for, so that we can share them at the beginning of every semester, because our particular adjunct that spoke up said, "I think it would be better coming from your reps." Also, it would engage the reps with their constituents so that we're able to have a better relationship and that they can learn that they have someone to come to when they have a question about things. So we're working on that for fall right now. For the summer, we're going to try and put together a basic script and a list of resources, and then build on that as we get more information from that. Lastly, our Bylaws Committee has finished our revision and sent them to the AFG Board for review and comments. Last people to give me their thumbs up on that, but we have almost finalized that. As soon as we get all of our consensus in, we will be moving the bylaws forward to our district HR, the chancellor, the provost, for their input and hopefully approval on things. And that's been my month so far. So I want to thank you for your continued support for our group, our mission, and the work that we do. And we appreciate having our voice heard and being a part of the conversation here.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you very much. All right. We now have our staff representation report. Looks like we've got the bulk of it. Jason?
President Bittersmith, members of the board, chancellor, members of the Shared Governance Executive Council. Name is Jason Rich. Not able to join us tonight. She's out sick. Next slide, please. Oh, I want to ask a couple of questions about what is the peer representation role we serve? This is something that we've been asked to, like, share, so we're just going to talk about that a little quick. This isn't something that just affects staff. This is something that also applies to faculty as well. I just want to share a little bit of what it is in the staff realm. And what a peer representative is, is somebody who helps an employee who's going through a dis- discipline, make sure they have somebody there that they can talk to to help walk them through what's going on. It can be any employee. They do not have to be from the same employee group. The staff representation, we try to provide training to make sure that the reps are prepared to help and guarantee that, rep, we serve everybody in the room. We're serving the person that asks us to have heard the situation. Next slide, please. Now, part of this comes out of illegal foundation, known as law or no rights, which is that a public employee who has vested interest in a continued employment will have the notice of allegations against them, explanation of the evidence, and an opportunity to respond. Or peer representation comes in is to help make sure they understand the process they're going through. Now, that is it. So if you took us to the next slide, we want to leave some time for a real spotlight.
Welcome.
So next, perfect. So these are our staff representatives. We have our non-exempt staff representatives, Anne Scott Roberts, Jenna Van Dorn, and Tom Williams. And our exempt staff representatives, Dr. Erin Coe, myself, and in support, Claire Griesa. So I wanted to just spend a few minutes here, just going about, we've had a really terrific year. At your seats, we've included a handout here. At your seats, we've included a handout here that highlights so many of the amazing terrific things that Rio Salado has done this year, and that's just a small portion, I will tell you that. There are so many things have gone. So next slide please. Thank you. So I call these college bright spots, inspired by Atomic Habits author James Clear. Bright spots are seemingly insignificant, small positive changes that over time accumulate to create substantial results. We've had a, not just small insignificant, we've had small insignificant, we've had huge, we've had a bunch of bright spots in what we've done this year. And I'm so proud to be able to represent Rio Salado as a staff senator and bring these to you. Our college culture, we established a workplace foundation founded on teamwork, shared purpose, and commitment to excellence. College recognition, nationally acclaimed for its forward thinking and flexible leadership in guiding the institution through major shifts in higher education. College stewardship, zero cost textbook options, I'm going to get to that in a second, that's huge. Helping to break down financial barriers and make education more accessible for students. College connections, I'm going to talk a little bit about the incarcerated program. We've given laptops to some of the students in that program and that has made an entire world of difference to these students. College accessibility founded the accessibility council to lead and coordinate accessibility efforts across the college and the newly developed accessibility services team to support those accessibility efforts. So the college culture, huge, huge shout out to the department at Rio, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. Every, every department touched this. In 2024, we achieved a remarkable milestone. Staff turnover rate of just 6.9%, that's unheard of, the lowest in eight years. This historic achievement reflects the unwavering support of our governing board, the strength of our leadership and dedication to our incredible staff. Together, we've built a workplace culture rooted in collaboration, purpose, and excellence. Here's to continued success and a brighter future. And just a little side note down there, although 2020 was 6.3, we don't really consider that because that was COVID and, you know, we all know how that went. Anyway, college recognition. The ACE fidelity investments award for institutional transformation was given to Rio Salado and President Kate in February. It came within an award of $10,000. The prize money, which we're super excited about to share with you, will be used to engage students in research. And that is really a way forward. We champion innovation, we champion forward thinking and design innovation, and that's an amazing way to think about that. So scholar, college, I'm trying to really hurry here because I know what, you know, I'm like certain amount of time. So college stewardship. We, the faculty have put together a zero cost materials forum here. So through their, again, champion of this, we have managed to, you can see all the statistics there. The one that I really want to point out is there's a nearly $500 million savings to students. That's half a billion with a B in savings to students through the Maricopa Millions OER program. So students across the district have saved that much money, including an estimated $200,000 by Rio Salado students in math courses alone over the past two years. And that is huge, that just is so huge. Much of this success, I need to shout out to Dr. Donna Tannehill, the math faculty chair, whose efforts have helped eliminate textbook costs in all of the required math courses. You know, times are challenging right now and times are challenging for students. We all heard the amazing things that our students have done and to be able to offer that to students just is the only care. And college connections, that's what I was talking about with the students in the Perryville complex. The prison, women's prison made history with the first cohort to complete the level one addiction and substance abuse use disorder certificate through the Rio Salado Second Chance Pell Online Laptop Pilot Program in December 2020. That again alone, I don't know, I'm sure you're all familiar with getting a laptop into a prison is a big accomplishment. Huge accomplishment. There are a lot of, you know, internet issues and things like that that have to go along with that. And so having them able to rise to the challenge and we met that. I wanted to just read this quote from Carol Gerhova, one of the graduates of this program. When we already see ourselves from a limited perspective and then you have somebody that comes along and says, you can do this, you're more than that number, you're more than that orange shirt that you're wearing, you're more than that label of being a felon. Gerhova said, I am truly grateful to be able to see that I am capable and I am worthy. And again, one of the things that we're so, so proud of at Rio. And finally, college accessibility, I mentioned that earlier in establishing the accessibility council to coordinate and oversee all college-wide efforts. Accessibility services team in, of course, production to support faculty, instructional designers, and disability resource services. And then we've got a lot of custom tools that are coming on and we're just really excited about that. And I think I'm out of time and out of breath. So do you have any questions for us? That was a lot, I know.
But great content. Thank you for that other questions.
I just want to express my appreciation for the work that you're doing with the textbooks and Lauren Goss for students.
Thank you. Yes, it's so meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the team and we appreciate that. And I think some of us are going to see a couple of you in a week or so.
Yes, for training.
Exactly.
Thank you. I get to serve as another year's senator, so I'm super excited about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're now going to move it, we're just nine and ten is flipping just a little bit. So I would like to start with the semi-annual presentation to the board. Brian, if you are ready and willing and able to do that. Mr. Brian Spicker, the president and CEO, he's still president and CEO of the Community Colleges Foundation.
Thank you, President Bittersmith, members of the governing board, Dr. Gonzalez and S E G C. I am not Brian, I am Julie Reese, the current chair of the foundation board. But I really want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. We're really excited to be here with you tonight to share some of the accomplishments of the foundation over the past seven months. Next slide please. Tonight, we're going to kick off with a very special mission moment made possible by a student from Mesa Community College. And this mission moment is especially important because the Virginia Piper Foundation provided $2.5 million to the foundation and the foundation matched it with an additional $750,000 to create an LPN program at three of the Maricopa colleges. So we are really excited to be able to introduce you to Seraphina.
Seraphina Youngquay.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank God. Without his grace and strength, I wouldn't be standing here today. To my family, thank you for being my rock, my motivation, and my reason to keep going. To our amazing teachers, your patience and passion shape us into the nurses we are becoming. And to my classmates, we laughed, cried, and survived clinicals together. I am proud of every one of you. We just didn't earn a pin, we earned a future. Thank you.
So when you look at Seraphina's smile, I think it says it all, her confidence, her enthusiasm. That's exactly why, why we serve at the foundation and we know we have a shared purpose with all of you here this evening as well. We are so grateful to be able to do this work and to share it with you tonight. Next slide please. You've seen all of this many times before at the foundation. Our goal is to really provide the financial supports to students as they seek post-secondary certifications and degrees. And we're very excited that we've expanded beyond scholarships and we are now supporting students with their basic needs, whether those be housing, transportation, food. We're trying to work collaboratively with you to do all of that. Next slide please. We do have a wonderful board made up of volunteers. Many of you contribute your time as well from the governing board. We're so grateful to you. I did want to acknowledge that I have some of the fellow board members who have been with us throughout the evening. I'd like to invite them to stand. Let's give them a round of applause. They all deserve recognition. We also have some of our exceptional professional staff here this evening and I'd like to invite them to stand as well. Judy Neelam. Supporting the students is truly a team effort and we're very, we're very fortunate to have such a wonderful board as well as professional staff. Next slide please. Of course, our work is also tied and we very much appreciate the work of the colleges and the RDC council partners. So I'd like to acknowledge them as well. All right, now I will turn over the presentation to my esteemed president and CEO, Brian.
And before, before we do that, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board, Julie, for your leadership. Long, long tenured leadership, I would point out. So thank you for that.
Thank you, President Bittersmith. I should acknowledge this is my very last governing board meeting. So very grateful for this opportunity. Caroline Lynch will be presenting to you at the next foundation presentation. And then following Caroline, we also have our chair-elect, Abrahn, who will be succeeding Caroline. So we have an exceptional pipeline of chairs that you will be experiencing.
Well, again, you've set the bar high, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Spicker, president and CEO of the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation. So I just want to review a few of the major accomplishments over the last, and we're continuing this fiscal year. But really, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the public launch of the $20 million Empowered for Student Success was really important. We've not had a campaign many years at the foundation. That launched in December and today I'm happy to announce that the Empowered for Student Success is at $15,737,000. And so with, with our resource development officer partners, our presidents, and the remarkable development team at the foundation, we should surpass the 20 million by July of 2026 easily. The other piece is the Maricopa Promise, the idea that we could develop a promise program that was countywide. And to do that, we needed to raise two and a half million for this first cohort that we're making a promise now for four semesters. That's for adult learners and for students new to Maricopa Community College and those dollars have been raised. And now we're working on the next cohort for '26, '27. And then the billboards, which really was a new concept, a different idea. And it took the district working closely with the college, Mesa Community College, working closely with the city of Mesa to show that we can have an expanded revenue opportunity. And that $400,000 a year that we'll spend off of that effort is equal to a $10 million endowment. We couldn't have done that quickly if it hadn't been for the district, the city, and Mesa Community College coming. So the next slide kind of gets to, you know, the important, the important metric that we operate with. And that is the total support and revenue over the course of the last six years. So what does total support and revenue mean? Means contributions, donations, in-kind donations. Our fees that go into our operating, which we make available to all 10 colleges, our database, our legal, all of those, as well as event revenue and investment earnings. And you can see the, the steady increase over time of where we're at. And I'm, I'm certain that over the course of the next few months, under the leadership of Judy Sanchez and Neelam Patel, and a shout out to Sharon Wells, who is our grant writer, we're going to surpass that 18.9 million that was set last year. But it really is to the work of the team that makes sure this, this keeps moving. So a shout out to Judy and Neelam and Sharon. So what does that mean? In terms of direct supports to colleges? And Julie mentioned that we are beyond scholarships. We were known for just scholarships, but over the last six years, we worked towards emergency funds, stipends, internships, as well as material support to colleges. And you saw Seraphina speak about that LPN expansion. I had the pleasure of being at the pinning ceremony for the LPNs. Zabilski from the Piper Foundation, Dr. Daniels, and came to know that one of the 19 members who was pinned that night lived in her car that whole process. And you see the dedication our students have to do something with what we can provide them in diligence there. It was very humbling and to see their families supporting them. So the direct contributions to students and support to colleges, you can see the steady rise of what we've been able to do. And it's exciting. We'll get to the 10 million easily. We've got some grants that are, we're just waiting for the dollars to come in and then you'll see these revenue purple lines move. Next slide. And unfortunately, I didn't say next slide. This is the slide for the direct support to students in colleges. Elsa, I'll work on that just today. So, so the last, the next slide is the history of our corpus growth. So in fiscal year 20, we were at about 40. And it's been a steady growth where today we're at $76,680,000. And that growth is both the contributions the community is making and our investment returns. Those two things are the big levers. I were able to push things out to the district. But this next slide really says it all. And that is, over the past six years, the corpus grew by $69,310,000 to $76,000,000. But the real story is while we achieved that growth, the foundation provided $43,521,000 towards scholarship, student supports, and material supports to colleges and the district. And that's, that's the real story. That's why we, that's why we do it. This is how we do it once at a prior, yeah, some of you remember it was scary. Yeah. So I'm going to move quickly. Grants have been transformational. We are now on an ongoing basis, working with funders who are interested in giving us transformational grants. Talked about the LPN expansion. So it's about scaling. It's not about pilots. It's not about, oh, we funded Maricopa Community College system with X. It's no, we want to be a partner and transform the future of our community with the Maricopa Community College system. And so while we're, we're excited about the 6.1 million that is in as of April, we know we've got another 2.5% probably hitting before the end. So it's been a phenomenal year in our grant efforts. Then lastly, the last couple of slides are about our scholarships. And what you see here is a continued steady growth of those awarded. Fiscal year 25 is not done yet. We're still awarding scholarships. So we expect to, to reach 3.9 or even exceed 3.9. But the individuals getting the scholarships, this year 74% were first generation. That speaks a lot about the students we serve. And then in terms of the recipients, we are a minority majority scholarship provider. So the majority of the students receiving. So the majority of the students receiving scholarships are, are representative. The next slide talks a little bit about those emergency and basic needs. And again, looking at over the last six years, steady growth there. The, the needs continue to be greater than what, what we have, but we're fortunate for those individuals. Focus on education, but they're willing to focus on the student and what they need to get across the finish line. The next slide is really, what are the opportunities the foundation has to keep the momentum? And we need to double down on the culture philanthropy system-wide. It's really, really critical. And I'm happy to say that Lisa Armour is going to put on her wall, have I thought about philanthropy? Because it, it's really that thinking. In everything that we do that makes all the difference in, in the world is, are we thinking about, is this an opportunity? Aim something? Is this an opportunity to bring a partner in in a different fashion? So we're getting there, but it's really double down. Then this idea of regional system-wide philanthropic collaborations. We couldn't have gotten that Piper grant if we didn't bring a scaling opportunity across multiple colleges. We have those, we need more of those. It doesn't make sense to nickel and dime our funders anymore. We need to be asking for the big stuff, and it's going to take thinking regionally and collaboratively across the system. And then lastly, maintain and grow the Maricopa Promise Program. So what are the challenges to that momentum? Fundraising at the 10 colleges is highly bearable with variation of, of performance. And we've seen improvement, and we want to keep building on that. But can you imagine if every college was bringing in a million in revenue, or a million and a half, or 2 million in revenue? Then in the impact of preferences, we have seen the impact on legacy gifts. People who built a fund, who wanted to leave a legacy for a particular population, know that, that, that's going to have impact. But it, it, the, the opportunities are greater than the challenges forward. And lastly, on the thank you slide, I'm going to wrap up by saying, thank you for giving me the opportunity to have an encore career here. It's been humbling because the people in this room, students we've seen, the years of seeing what happens every day in this system, and to be able to sign checks for scholarships, you have no idea what that does to someone's soul. And because it's strangers who care, it's strangers who give to our students. All of it worked because of the dedicated group of individuals in this room. The staff, the team, but the intellectual capital that's right here, right now, and all over the system. And so the future is in the ascent for our system. And I've been excited and part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So Brian and, Brian and Julie, don't, don't sit down quite yet, if you wouldn't mind. I just want to ask the board, do anybody have questions about the report? Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, we'll come back to thank yous. Don't make me cry, but that's a whole other thing. So what do you see as the board's role overall? And we have some outstanding board members who participate with you on the board, Julie, to support the opportunities and mitigate the challenges?
Well, I think, Madam President Bittersmith, Governing Board Member Sullivan, I think that connectivity and the ongoing communication with the board is crucial so that we can demonstrate alignment as we are communicating with funders. We know that the foundation plays an important role, but you as governing board members with your, your policy objectives are very important to protecting those relationships also. So I think it's crucial that, that we just maintain that connectivity and communication throughout the process as we select our next president and CEO. We're very fortunate that we have Judy Sanchez as our interim president and CEO. She has more than two decades at the foundation, so she's, Brian has created tremendous momentum. Judy will continue to build upon that. But as we look to the future and our next president and CEO, I think continuing to be in lockstep and coordination with you and your governing board members is crucial.
Thank you, Julie. I think the other piece is stability and continuity. And the governing board, as you, as you saw the trajectory over their years, think of the governing board. Think of the stability, the dedication, the governance side makes my, our job so much easier. So that's, that's really critical. Keep doing what you're, you're doing. And then the chancellor's leadership. The chancellor's ability to create a vision, to Julie's point, those four pillars of his vision, those are our marching orders at the foundation in terms of philanthropic opportunity, as well as the strategic plan. So keep doing what you're doing, and more will come.
And thank you for your leadership. It's been an outstanding opportunity to work with both of you, and I wish you best. But as I said, you know, don't, you were almost crying. I saw that.
And still, still don't sit down, because with chancellor, with your permission, I'd like to do the recognition component and then come back to your very important report. Okay with you? So we do actually have one recognition this evening. It's not a big surprise he's standing at the podium. But this afternoon, we had the pleasure of doing more social opportunity to recognize Brian's leadership and to present him with a few things I think you probably didn't need, but I guess you have secret Maricopa swag that none of the rest of us have. So that's a step in the right direction. But I wanted to, to, for, this is now on the public record, and we wanted to do this so that it is held in perpetuity in our minutes and, and in the video. Brian is, who is currently the president and CEO of the Maricopa Foundation, will retire after more than five decades of human service and philanthropy, the end of May. Whether he really retires is still a subject of some question, but, but, but certainly his legacy here at the foundation is well-known. Since he joined the foundation in 2019, Brian has transformed the organization into a high-performing fundraising entity, district that needs capacity, building strategic partnerships, expanding workforce and industry initiatives. Under his leadership, and you've heard some of it tonight, foundation's revenue grew from $5.2 million in 2019 and 2020 to over $11.4 million in FY 2023-24. Scholarship funding has increased by 34% in the past three years alone, reaching over 5,450 students, which is a remarkable number. So on behalf of the board, we are deeply grateful for your unwavering support of our students. You've made a significant impact during your time here at Maricopa, and we are sure you have inspired future leadership to continue your legacy. So with that, I would like to, it was a reference to the fact that Judy Sanchez will serve as our interim president and CEO of the Maricopa Community College Colleges Foundation effective June 1, 2025. Judy, would you stand again? I think most of us know you, but just, there she is. Judy brings more than 20 years of service to the Maricopa system and has been a steadfast advocate for student success. And since joining the foundation in 2014, she's worked closely with Brian to expand development efforts and strengthen relations with donors and community partners. And that has ensured that more students in ever can access the resources they need to thrive. And earlier this year, she was honored with the 2025 YWC Tribute to Leadership Award for her efforts to expand access and opportunity for students. So in foundation, in partnership with the foundation board, the district leadership has launched a national, national search for a permanent president and CEO as we continue to advance the foundation's mission in support of our students and colleges. And we are confident in Judy's ability to lead the organization during the transition and ensured the continued growth that Brian has set us in a great pattern to move forward with. So I would like, if you wouldn't join me and the board in one more round. We've had several of these, but one more round of applause and thank yous for Brian and his work for the foundation. Now with that, Chancellor, I realize I've set you up because now you have to give your report, but I would welcome your report, which I know has great content, too. We just don't have the same tears coming, so.
Well, President Bittersmith, fortunately, I've only got one item with 27 parts to report. We'll get through this. Thank you for your patience, everybody, this evening. Wonderful reports tonight. They just all happen to sort of line up here at the end of our academic year. So if this is your first time at our board meeting, it's, we're usually at this point, sometimes we're checking out by now, right? So, but it's a good night, good night to celebrate. And keeping in line with the, the fact that we focus on Rio Salado College through student reports and such, let me give you some additional college-specific data. Their spring enrollment is up 8% compared to 20, spring 2024. And last year, Rio served 41,661 unique students and are currently on track to exceed that number this year. Credentials awarded since May 2024, Rio has awarded 4,995 credentials. Some points of pride and things that are new at Rio Salado. In partnership with the city of Tempe, they launched the Tempe Promise Program in January, providing lower-income Tempe residents 25 years and older financial support for tuition and other expenses to attend college. Through the no-cost, low-cost OER textbook options, Rio students saved $4,247,800 between summer 2024 and spring 2025, and $14 million, nearly $15 million between spring 2020 and summer 2025. That's incredible. Rio Salado was one of the five community colleges across the country selected by Education Design Lab to take part in the reimagining Community College Design Challenge, a new initiative focused on developing and implementing transformation plans that reorient program offerings to improve economic outcomes for learners. The college successfully implemented Remote Virtual Proctoring, also known as RVP, an assessment solution designed to uphold academic integrity while providing students worldwide with accessible testing options. Since the pilot launch, RVP-administered exams have increased by 342%, reflecting the college's commitment to innovative, scalable solutions that support student success. All right. Let me pare some of this down here. Enrollment, let me give you an enrollment update for the system now. We're going to system, so that's, congratulations, Kate, and you and your team for all the wonderful work you guys have been doing. And there's, seems to be not a week go by that Kate's not informing me that her college or someone on her team has received some sort of a national recognition. So congra, it's Tuesday, Kate, so you've got a couple more days to get that to me. As we approach the start of our summer session and monitor fall enrollments, we continue to see positive increases. Three weeks before the semester started for the summer, headcount is up 1% from last year, at 32,136 students. For fall 2025, now we're 16 weeks away from the start of the fall semester. Headcount is currently up 26.6%. So, but wouldn't that be awesome if we could keep that, huh? Well, no, we'll keep some percentage of that, but I'll, I'll keep, continue to report this as we approach the fall semester. For our legislative update, the government relations team is awaiting the starting, excuse me, the start of the budget process, which is expected to begin close to the June deadline. And advocacy efforts for increased funding for adult education programs are ongoing. Also, I want to let everybody know that we are, as, as part of the vision, and particularly the vision that I laid out around changing the college-going behavior of our K-12 students in Maricopa County, there will be a group that is looking at dual enrollment and our early college programs. It's been many years since we have redesigned how we at least provide dual enrollment across Maricopa County, but it's a really good time for us and align with that new vision to take a look at dual enrollment, our early college experiences that our students have. In dual enrollment right now, I think the last time I reported to the board, I, I was quoting that we had roughly 25,000 high school students. We have 28,000 high school students that we are currently serving in, in just dual enrollment alone. So I imagine there's many hundreds, if not thousands, more that we're also serving through our other, other early college programs. So that will be, continue to be reported on as we approach this next academic year. And speaking of early college success, we've had two high school graduations for our two charter schools, where I learned that we've had a record number of students at each of the high schools earn their associate's degrees two weeks before they graduated from high school. Both call, both high schools have nearly doubled the amount of students that earn in their associate's degrees before that happens. And then we also had a student, I believe at South Mountain, who earned her bachelor's degree while, while graduating from high school as well. A student was featured on, I think it was Channel 15 News and maybe some other outlets. So some amazing things that we're doing in this space. President Bittersmith, members of the board, that concludes my report.
Dr. Gonzalez, thank you. Are there any questions from the board, Dr. Gonzalez? Dr. Murray?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the reports that we're getting from the committee, when can we expect the next update for, for early college?
Well, we're doing some work this summer, so I'd be happy to provide. Let's see, let's, let's shoot for perhaps August or September board meeting to give an update of what's been done over our summertime. That'll also allow some more faculty to arrive back to our campuses and be happy to provide those as often as needed. Certainly whenever anything significant has occurred.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. And thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. We have now moved on to citizens interim. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda. Presenting concerns to the board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect. The use of derisive or insulting language or the direction of remarks that defame, attack, or harass an individual may serve as a cause for the board's president to direct that speaker immediately to conclude his or her remarks. Each speaker has a three-minute timeframe in which to speak. I have one request to address the board, Mr. Erwin Jones. Jones, if you'd come to the podium, please.
President Bittersmith, governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, my name is Erwin Jones. I'm a head coach and president of the Phoenix Bobcats Track and Field Club. I also am an assistant track and field coach at Mesa Community College. When I start with my program back in 1981, I started at Phoenix College. I had five athletes on the team that were doing track and field. And over the course of number of years, we have moved on. And for 10 years, we practiced at Paradise Valley Community College. And then while we're at Paradise Valley Community College over the last year, we were not asked back. We submitted a facility use agreement, and we were denied that, thereby displacing, you know, my track club, some 20 members. And I was just seeking answers in why that we were displaced from Paradise Valley Community College, not allowed there. We prepaid, and we're giving our money back. But we're just looking for answers. I submitted a Freedom of Information Act in a, in request in December 28, 2024, and I still haven't received an answer. So I would just like to address the board to that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, we're going to move on to consideration of the consent agenda. All items in the sections agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
President Bittersmith?
Chancellor?
I would like to request that we remove item number 21, approval of amendment to adopted budget expenditures for fiscal year 23-24 to reflect actual expenditures by fund and move that to our June board meeting.
Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended, which would be minus G21? So I'll move to Ms. Butler? Ms. Butler? Did you say, I, I, thank you. Is there a second?
Second. All those in favor, send it by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Inanimously, the consent agenda is approved minus the removal of item G21. Let's now move on to the non-consent action items, starting with number one, which is the approval of the implementation of the FY '26 salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic
the approval of the implementation of the FY twenty-six salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan is approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy Two Point Seven, Staff Compensation and Benefits. Is there a motion to approve the amendment of the FY twenty-six salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic communications plan is approved and adopted by the governing board?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Noreen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, sign by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? By unanimous vote, the approval of implementation of the FY twenty-six salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan is approved and done by the governing board through Board Policy Two Point Seven is approved. Then let's move on to item number two, which is the motion to uphold, reject, or modify the hearing officer recommendations in the termination of Karen Mark. Are there any questions from the board? Is there a motion to uphold, reject, or modify the hearing officer recommendation to terminate? Miss Sullivan?
So moved.
The motion is to uphold? Yeah, again, I need to know what the motion is. So is what the motion is to?
Accept the recommendation of the hearing officer.
Correct.
For this personnel matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? All's in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. All right, we have moved on now to the first reading information items, which is the Employment and Separations Report for March fifteen, twenty twenty-five through April eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions? Not? Then item number two is the Arizona Auditor General Summary of Maricopa County Community Colleges District Fall FY twenty twenty-five Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Report on Internal Control and Compliance and Single Audit Report. Ms. Grineo, you have an opportunity to introduce yourself. I think we all know you, but I'm more, more important than the guests from the Auditor General's Office for their presentation.
Good evening. This is Henri. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of S G E C, colleagues and guests. I'm sure you all thought since the board approved the budget, you were done hearing from me, but you gave me one more time this spring. As this is our annual report from the Auditor General's Office, as has happened for the past few years, the Auditor General's Office for the state of Arizona is here to present the audits they've performed for Maricopa for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The office has performed our audits for several decades, and we most certainly appreciate their work as we all have the same common goal of good internal controls and great stewardship of public resources being in the state of Arizona. With that, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lindsay Perry, Auditor General, and Ms. Catherine Decker, Financial Audit Director, to share the outcomes of our twenty twenty-four audits, and I will have a couple of brief, I swear, additional comments after the presentation, but now I'll turn it over to Auditor.
Welcome, Ms. Perry.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez. Perry, I'm the Auditor General for the state. Appreciate you having us here at your meeting this evening, celebration of many things, including the district's audits. So, next slide, please. I know many of you are aware of my office, but for the new members, by way of background, my office is a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff, provide impartial information and specific recommendations to improve the operations and programs of state and local entities, such as the district. We are well-versed in and follow various auditing standards and accounting standards as well. Next slide, please. In our opening remarks, Ms. Grineo covered this, so I'll, I'll skip this slide as to why we are here. Similar to all of our years of conducting the district's audits, the district signs what we call is the engagement terms and conditions. And this document outlines both your and our responsibilities regarding the financial statement and federal audits. So highlighted on this slide are some of the key responsibilities that we have, including conducting your audits in accordance with the various auditing standards and the various federal requirements. We also obtain reasonable assurance whether the county's financial statements are free material misstatement. While reasonable assurance is high, it is not absolute. It's not an absolute level of assurance, and that being said, the risk of not identifying material misstatements and non-compliance is higher due to fraud than from error, because fraud may involve a collaborative effort to commit fraud, management not using or overriding certain internal controls and other factors. We also communicate to you and your management team any significant matters for both the financial statement and federal clients' audits, including expressing our opinions regarding those reports. Next slide, please. Firstly, on this slide are some of the key district responsibilities, including providing for audit accurate and financial statements and financial information to my teams in accordance with accounting principles and various federal requirements. Additionally, the district is responsible for taking corrective action on audit findings, which includes providing a written corrective action plan that is included in our reports. Finally, the district is responsible for providing us with unrestricted access to staff, documentation, infrastructure systems, and any resources necessary to complete the audit. This also includes meeting audit deadlines that were previously agreed upon at the start of the audit. Slide, please. I am happy to report with the assistance of your management team, we were able to meet deadlines and issue the district's reports on time, that being a March thirty-one deadline. Tonight, we'll be discussing our audit work on the three required annual reports. That is the district's annual comprehensive financial report. The second, the report on internal control compliance, and third, the federal single audit report. As we have done in the past, when we issue these reports, we email each of you with links to those reports, which we did in December nineteenth of two thousand of last year, February tenth of twenty-five, and March thirty-first of twenty-five as well. The first report, the district's annual comprehensive financial report, presents the district's annual financial statements and our opinion on them. I'm happy to report that for fiscal year twenty-four, we reported an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means that the district's financial statements can be relied upon. The second report, Report on Internal Control and Compliance, is where we report any findings and recommendations resulting from our audit of the district's financial statements. This report included three findings, which we will discuss shortly. Finally, the third and final report, the federal single audit report, includes our assessment of the district's compliance with federal program requirements over each federal program area that we were required to audit and a report on internal control with federal programs. It also includes the district's schedule of expenditures and federal awards and our opinion on it. This is a critical audit for, for the, for the federal government to continue to draw down monies to the district. This audit is necessary and is required to be completed Thursday first. This is also where we report two findings on some federal programs for the district's fiscal year twenty-four. Next slide, please. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Catherine. We'll discuss the district's five-year financial trends and highlights, followed by discussing the district's three financial statement findings and two federal findings and recommendations that are reported. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Decker.
As we know, these reports can be detailed and complex. Our office provides a two-page summary of financial data that highlights some of the trends occurring with the district. So I'd like to take the opportunity just to highlight a few of those as a financial information. The first one here, the first, the four main sources of revenue tend to be property taxes, governmental grants and contracts, tuition and fees, and state assistance. As you can see from the graph, everything's been on a slight tick up consistently, with exception to governmental grants and contracts. So I'm sure you're aware that due to decreased federal grant revenue associated with quarantine relief, those revenues are decreasing. Next slide, please. As you can see from this graph, the district's four primary expense purposes continue to be instruction, institutional support, student services, and student financial assistance. After remaining relatively consistent for fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty-three, the district's instruction and student services expenses have increased about twenty-seven million and twenty-two point six, respectively, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. These increases were partially due to the fourth year implementation of the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan, and overall, the district operating expenses increased by nearly eighty million. Next slide, please. This graph highlights the five-year trend of the district's revenues and expenses. And so you can see the revenues are shown in the light bar with expenses being in the dark blue bar. You can also see that revenues have exceeded its expenses since fiscal year twenty twenty. And from the black line, which is net position, the net position has increased every year since fiscal year twenty twenty. Most importantly, the district's overall net position increased by twenty-two point nine million for fiscal year twenty-four. Total net position was seven hundred and fifteen million since June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which represented an increase of nearly two hundred and twelve million. With that, five hundred and forty-eight million of its balance is restricted, or excuse me, is invested in capital assets, and nearly a hundred and sixty million is restricted. This leaves an unrestricted net position of approximately six point six million. Next slide, please. Finally, I'd like to highlight the district's federal expenditures that are presented each year in the district's single audit report. As you can see from the table, most of its federal expenditures were from the U.S. Department of Education like the past five years. You can also see a substantial decrease in the federal expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four. Specifically, the district's education stabilization fund grant expenditures were one point two million for fiscal year twenty-four, which was a decrease of seventy-three million from this year. Next slide, please. Before we discuss the findings reported in the twenty twenty report, I would like to acknowledge the district's progress in correcting three of the five findings that we reported in the prior year and partially correcting other two findings, which were repeated as findings for fiscal year. As you can see on the slide, the district fully corrected a finding related to the student financial assistance cluster, trio cluster program, and as well as a higher education institutional aid program. Next slide, please. Now I will go over the financial statement findings. The first financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the district's review of employee timesheets. The district reported to us that during fiscal year twenty twenty-four, supervisors had not reviewed or approved eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven employee timesheets, representing approximately five point six three million. To correct this finding, we recommend that the district should enforce its written procedures, requiring its supervisors to review and approve timesheets either before payroll is processed or within three business days. Also, to monitor and ensure each college's human resources department verifies that its supervisors are performing post-payroll reviews and correcting any errors noted. Also recommend the district develop procedures to periodically compile and submit a listing of remaining unapproved timesheets to each college and follow up with the supervisors to approve them. This finding was initially reported in fiscal year twenty fourteen, and the district agreed with the finding reported that it anticipated correcting it by February of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. The second financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the district's processes for managing and documenting risks to its IT systems and data. Our report includes recommendations for the district to develop and document processes to monitor adherence to the district's colleges' offices' annual risk assessment policies and managing risks to determine where critical controls can be implemented and to perform an annual entity-wide IT risk assessment, which includes documenting risks and evaluating safeguards. This is a new finding for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The district agreed with the finding and reported that it anticipated correcting the remaining deficiencies by June of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. Our third financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the district's controls over its IT systems and data. Our report identifies recommendations for the district to develop and document comprehensive IT policies and procedures, as well as to monitor employees' adherence to IC, IT policies and procedures on a periodic basis to ensure they are consistently followed, and develop, document, and implement processes to restrict access and enhance authentication requirements for its IT systems. This finding was initially reported in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The district agreed with the finding and reported that it anticipates fully correcting the issue by June twenty. Slide, please. Now I will transition over to the federal compliance findings that we reported in the single audit report. For the Child Care and Development Block Grant, we've reported one federal compliance finding over fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The district's Student Affairs Department did not develop, document, or implement internal control procedures to monitor compliance with the program's reporting requirements. So specifically for all four federal program reports that we tested, the department did not retain documentation that it had reviewed in those reports prior to be, to submitting those to its pass-through grant. Review and approvals ensure that the reported expenditures are accurate, agree to the district's financial records, and contained only allowable expenses. Despite lacking internal control procedures, we did not identify any inaccurate program information reported to its pass-through grant. Our recommendation is that the district should develop, document, and implement procedures, as well as train responsible employees to monitor compliance with the program's reporting requirements. This should include developing a process to perform and document an independent review and approval of all federal program reports before submitting them to the grantor. This is a new finding for fiscal year twenty. The district agreed with the audit finding and reported to us that it plans on implementing our recommendations by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. The second federal compliance finding identified deficiencies over the adult education basic grants to states and the higher education institutional aid programs over timesheet. This is similar to what was documented in the financial statement finding, but this specifically impacts the federal program. Payroll costs timesheets after the work was performed for these programs. Specifically, the district could not provide documentation to support employees' pay rates and authorization to perform work on these programs, such as offer letters, contracts, and personal action forms, or did not approve employee timesheets after the work was performed for twenty-two of fifty-four payroll transactions we tested, totaling seventy-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Therefore, we recommend that the district retain documentation for all payroll costs, such as employment agreements, acceptance letters, to demonstrate employees' salaries and wages are authorized to be charged to federal programs and spent in accordance with those award terms and conditions. Our second recommendation was to review the fiscal year twenty twenty-four payroll cost. Our second recommendation was to review the fiscal year 2024 payroll costs for those specific programs to ensure that they were properly supported and spent in accordance with the award terms and coordinate with the U.S. Department of Education as necessary to adjust any federal reimbursement requests or repay any unallowable costs the district identifies. Our third recommendation on this one is just to enforce and train employees on the district's written procedures and requirements it has to retain these program documentation for at least three years from the date the program's final report is submitted to the federal awarding agency. Lastly, we recommend the district update its written procedures to require documentation of all employment offers, including offers for its temporary employees. This was a new finding for fiscal year 2024. The district agreed with the audit finding and reported that it plans to correct the deficiencies by June 30th of 2024. Next slide, please. I thank Madam President, members of the governing board, and Chancellor Gonzalez for allowing us to present our audit results and findings today. I would also like to thank the district staff once again for their cooperation on our audits. We've had a positive professional working relationship with the district management and staff, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Ms. Decker, do you want to make a few comments, and then we'll see first questions for either the Auditor General's office or for you?
Very much, President Bittersmith, members of the board. So as Catherine alluded to in her comments, both reports, which you all have and are included in the board packets, the report on internal control and compliance and the single audit report do contain the district's corrective action plan, and all of these plans are underway. However, in order to manage expectations, I need everybody to understand that implementing corrective actions this fiscal year may not result in that, in us not having a finding in fiscal year 25, for instance. A lot of that is simply due to timing. So we continue to try to make progress, certainly on the older finding that we have around payroll, time sheet approvals and compliance. But we're continuing to make improvements with our eye toward complete resolution of the findings and also having strong internal controls to prevent findings from the future. I just wanted to make sure that the board and that those efforts are certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Green. While you're there, are there any questions from the board for Ms. Greenio? Ms. Sullivan?
I thank you, first of all, for your presentation, Ms. Greenio, and thank you to the Auditor General's office. I sit on the Internal Audit Committee with Ms. Butler, who's chair, and want you to know that some of these items had come up in a previous meeting. We'll be meeting on Monday. Also, to look at this and certainly particularly tied to the finding that originated in 2014, we did have discussion about that in our meeting and worked with Ms. Greenio and Ms. Bone to ensure that that's being addressed. So thank you again for the efforts of the Business Services Department, and I know that efforts are certainly underway on all of these items, and we'll be monitoring that as we go forward. Ms. Butler is, as chair, I think you have that on the agendas, and Ms. Greenio?
Thank you. We do have it on the agenda, and I'm looking forward to further discussion, and appreciate your explanation of all of these things that were going on so that we knew that we knew to expect, you know, some of these findings and that we know in advance how hard you're working to correct all of these things. So thank you.
A large team working on these findings.
And any questions for Ms. Greenio? Any questions for either Ms. Perry or Ms. Decker? If not, thank you both for sitting through the meeting, for this presentation. We appreciate your effort and review. And as you heard, the board committee is moving forward on Monday to continue to do our work. So thank you for joining us. Okay, we are moving on to our monitoring reports. There is just one of those, which is the Budget Analysis Report Fund I, general understricken fund for the 10 months ending for 30, 2025. Are there any questions at this point on the board? Seeing none, we are on to our community linkage reports, which I think are going to be interesting because it's graduation month. So let me start with Ms. Butler, if I could, please.
Thank you, President Bittersmith. I, let's see, started the month at the AACT All Trustees Meeting with many of my colleagues. Very interesting to meet other trustees across the state and hear all of our opportunities and challenges. Then I was really pleased to join today's celebration of Brian Spicker and his retirement from the foundation board. We are just beyond grateful for his decades of work, and he's just been a transformational leader for us. So thank you very much. Looking forward to tomorrow for, to our foundation board's annual retreat and meeting tomorrow. So it'll be lots of foundation opportunities in the next couple of days. And then I was so disappointed to be out of town on a family meeting this and missed convocations and graduations. And I know that it is such a celebration of all that we are all doing and all that you are all working toward and our students, and I'm so disappointed to have missed those, but I'm looking forward to hearing all of the reports of my colleagues. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Davis?
I too went to the AACT meeting and learned a lot of great things, especially about AI that's going to take over the world. And then I went to the Women's Mentor Graduation, which was fabulous. I attended both the Native American and Hispanic convocations, which also were absolutely wonderful. The Native American convocation ended with fireworks, so that was pretty cool. I attended the Innovation 27 groundbreaking ceremony with President Bittersmith, and that was like old home week. There were so many people there. I thought I, it's, my, the best line of that whole thing was Paul Stanton, who is the superintendent of Washington Elementary School District. And in his remarks, he held up his name tag from being the superintendent of Washington Elementary School District, and then he took, pulled another name tag out of his pocket, and it was his name tag from working at the Kmart that the Innovation 27 is going into. And he was a student worker there when he was in high school. So that was the coolest, coolest thing. And poor President Bittersmith had to follow that, which was not, not hard to do. I attended the Phoenix College Prep Academy graduation on Friday, and I went to the Paradise Valley Community College stage and screen show, which was wonderful. Lots of great singers at that college, so it was fun to see that. And then I attended both the GCC and the Australia Mountain graduations, and I, five minutes into this thing, showed my age because there were cones in the road on my way to get there, and I thought we were, wow, we must be expecting a lot of people because it's, they're like diverting traffic. And when I got to the door, the girl said to, said to, I said to her, are we expecting a lot of people? There's all these cones in the road. And she said, that's because the weekend is coming. And I said, I know, it's Friday. I'm so excited. And it turned out that the weekend was this guy that was doing a concert over at State Farm Stadium. And so I immediately showed my age, and then, and I said, the weekend is a sing, is that a group? And she said, no, it's a guy. So that, so I did that. That also went over well. And then I was going to try and go home in between the two if I had time, but I threw a shirt in my car just in case because I had on the Glendale shirt, which, by the way, Glendale 60th anniversary shirt, courtesy of Dr. Hernandez at graduation. But I brought the, no, I don't have any socks. But I brought, I wore my Glendale community shirt underneath my regalia for Glendale's ceremony. I was going to wear an EMCC shirt, but I don't have one, but Ray has promised me one. And so I, but I brought a purple shirt, and I, and I just happened to throw it in the car in case I needed it. Well, I was going to go home, but the traffic was such a mess. I tried to go home, but they, the parking people there didn't know what was going on, and it was just a mess. So I went back and proceeded to change my shirt in the backseat of my car, thinking, oh, my God, I hope there's no news people here or something that are watching. Yes, that's true. That's true. I don't want to be the flasher in the parking lot of graduation. So anyway, it was fun attending the graduations, and they were both great. And I found out two days later that I actually handed one of the folders to one of my friend's kids at Glendale's graduation. So that was, that really made it special. So thank you. That's my report.
So we're going to the competing t-shirt entry in the board. Dr. Narini?
Let's see, my report, I too attended the Hispanic and the Native American and the multicultural convocation ceremonies that were fabulous. Let's see, on the 23rd, I attended the foundation board meeting and also the AACT All Trustee Meeting. On the 24th, let's see, I was at Gateway for the Hoop of Learning senior celebration. That's where all the different hoops, hoopla learning groups came together to have their, from all the different colleges for their celebration. And like the other members, I attended Linda Rosenthal Women's Mentoring Graduation. At Paradise Valley, I went to their Spring Festival of Tales, which was, again, it's always fun. The one they have in the fall and in the spring. I was at Gateway's Nursing Pinning Ceremony on May 6th, graduation for Gateway and South Mountain, May 8th and 9th. Was at South Mountain for their Ace in Hoop of Learning Celebration on May 15th. And then on the 20th, I was at the Arizona Career Pathway Board to meet with them to tell us, tell me all the wonderful things that they're doing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Ms. Smith?
On April 29th, I attended the Systemwide Planning Meeting, and I have to say it was one of the best planning-related meetings I've been to while being as a board member. I really appreciated it, and especially to this group of wonderful women that was at the table. I felt like we had a really nice conversation and could all be a little bit vulnerable and just like really discuss what's going on in the district. And I really appreciate it, and I have great appreciation for all of you. Thank you. I also participated and offered some brief remarks at the MCC and CGCC graduations and realized, I always cry at graduation every year, and I was trying to figure out like why the tears come out more than other times. And it's the family cheering, like especially like the radically excessive cheering. That's my favorite. And just so much love. And then finally, I know it's late. I just wanted to thank everyone so much for the time you've put in this year, and especially when we have a late meeting like this, just all that you do for your district. I feel tremendously honored to work with all of you. And I know we're missing different things with our families. I'll just add, I peeked at my phone a couple of times because I'm mistucking in my son when we go this late. And I said, what did I miss? And my husband wrote, Johnny has a girlfriend. He's four! So more news soon. So I know you all may be missing breaking news as well in your families. So thank you for all that you do for our district.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Keep us posted on that budding romance. We're doing matchmaking up here between children and grandchildren. Dr. Thor?
Well, I've been very busy also, just like the rest. On April the 23rd, I joined most of the board members at the Arizona All Trustees Meeting. On April the 25th, I was honored to make some remarks on behalf of the board at the graduation of the Lynda B. Rosenthal Mentor Program participants. On May 8th, I represented the governing board at Rio Salado's commencement, and this was the college's largest commencement yet with some 460 students walking. And it's noteworthy that 408 dual enrollment students received their associate degrees before receiving their high school diplomas this year. And that is nearly 100 more than received associate degrees last year. On May 9th, I represented the board at Chancellor Gilbert's afternoon commencement. And like Rio, this was Chancellor Gilbert's largest commencement yet with over 400 students walking at the two ceremonies. On May 20th, I attended the Mayor Kate Gallegos' State of the City address and luncheon, and the mayor was very upbeat and optimistic and mentioned the city's involvement with our colleges several times. On May 22nd, along with Marie Sullivan and Donna Davis, I attended the Phoenix College Preparatory Academy graduation, where 25 of the 58 graduates earned associate degrees. And finally, I want to congratulate Rio Salado alumnus Cordero Holmes, who received one of five outstanding alumni awards at the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Convention. And Cordero's remarks, and Kate has a video of it, Cordero's remarks were very moving and resulted in a standing ovation. And I want to share that Cordero began his Rio Salado journey as an incarcerated student. We're very proud of the work that the college does with incarcerated students. And Jacqueline, I need to share that my eight-year-old grandson told me that he has a betrothed. So prepare yourself. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. More to come on the budding romances here from board members. Ms. Sullivan?
I was disappointed that I wasn't able to attend as many events involving students as I would have liked, but I did have opportunities to do a few things. And certainly you've heard that we attended the All Trustee, Arizona All Trustee Meeting. I was there. I did do two graduations, and both very impactful. One was attending Phoenix College's graduation. And I'm always moved by that particular graduation. I've been to a few others, but probably because I have history with that entity. And every time I see someone walk across the stage to receive recognition, smile or dance in front of a camera, hear the families sound off foghorns and scream and yell and pop balloons and do all that, it just really is humbling to have the position that I do and we do to be participating with them as they reshape or shape their lives going forward. But I also have to comment that the graduation, I probably enjoyed, and I know it's hard to say this, Dr. Brett, more was attending the high school graduation of Phoenix College Preparatory Academy. You're seeing more burgeoning futures as these younger people come across the stage and have more than a little bit of life ahead of them, thinking through what are their next steps, how they're going to do it. And I, besides the statistics that Dr. Thor said about the associate degrees, they were all successful, and I would have to suggest that a lot of them were struggling to even get across that stage. And so congratulations to the high schools for beginning to create the pathway for these students in new and remarkable ways, certainly reflecting dual enrollment and other things. So I found that probably one of the most moving things I've been able to participate in this time. More along the business line, I sit on the Internal Audit Committee and as such, participated in interviews for the Director of the Internal Audit. And what else did I want to say? You know, wanted to certainly say thank you to all of you for bringing such an outstanding academic year to fruition. We get to sit here and recite all the things that we've done as that that's a big deal. We're nothing compared to what you do is a big deal. You know, we have opportunities to celebrate. We get to be present. We get to cheer some of you on through events. But as I heard one of my friends, who's not in the audience right now, but who said to me, you know, do I get to leave before we get to covering reports or governing board reports? I said, well, why would you want to do that? Well, it's just a recitation of what you do. But think of all the things that, that we do every day, or probably 10 hours a day. for probably 10 hours a day. And, um, our our role is important, but it's nothing compared to what you do to contribute to all the students' successes that we see through graduations or other events. So thank you for this year and look forward to more working with you moving forward and know that we're here to provide you with support.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Just quickly, because many duplications, obviously, I too joined the AACT All Trustee Meeting. And then, as Ms. Davis mentioned, was honored to represent the district and the board of the Innovation 27 groundbreaking with the the mayor again mentioned the partnership we have with workforce and those enterprises. And we we did get a great deal of response afterwards about the fact that we were there. One just sidebar, despite the Kmart badge issue, it was fun to see many of my business clients who were partners in that development who were there sometimes work and volunteer with those things to merge, and that was a great example of that. And then in addition, um, I was delighted to be a part of the Paradise Valley Pining Ceremony, or spending ceremony, which is always extremely moving as you see every single one, well, I should say all but one. Those graduates walked to the door with, they already had a job, a place to go, and the one remaining individual was headed to some graduate work. So it's really, and it's interesting to see how well those people move quickly into the workforce. And then was honored to be included in the Paradise Valley Graduation Ceremony, where their first baccalaureate degree graduates were featured and fireworks. And then it was followed by the SEC graduation with the tribal partners that always, that's an extremely interesting component and the unique relationship SEC has with our tribal community. Fireworks again, two nights in a row. It was great. And then in addition to that, I serve in the ACCT Public Policy Committee. We've had a number, a lot, actually, webinars and online meetings in that role because every day something's changing in Washington. But I'm proud to tell you that ACCT is tracking that and providing information for their committee members, as well as I know some of our staff turn in as well. And then finally, we, many of us have been involved with PAC meetings for the board, working at the upcoming adjudication, what might happen with the budget, maybe. I'm looking at Ms. Butler. She knows that. Takes sometimes forever for the, to get that done, but we're hoping that that will move and the session will conclude soon. I will just say, in conclusion, I I will, you've heard, from several of you, you've heard me say every time when I go to graduation, it is the best part of doing this job. It really gives you an opportunity to see the work product, which really we have nothing very much directly to do with. Walk across the stage and lives are changing. So I am, I'm very grateful for the colleges that include all of us as board members in their ceremonies. That makes the year because it really is, it really is terrific to see all the work you do every day, and then we get to see all of it celebrated in one evening. So thank you for that. With that, let's move on to just a couple of announcements. On June 10th, we have a special meeting regarding the charter high school budgets, followed by agenda review. That is in person here at the Rio Center because then the governing board has an executive session following that. And then on June 24th, we have the public hearing and adoption of the charter high school budgets, immediately followed by our regular governing board meeting. And so with those announcements, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Let the record reflect that on the, we are adjourned and Ms. Sullivan, I think it says 8:50. Is I reading the clock correctly? We stand adjourned. Thank you so much.